Welcome, everybody, to the regular City of White Lakes Council meeting. Monday, April thirteenth, 2020, six thirty. Roll call, please. Becky.
Mayor Breland.
Here.
Councillor Zins.
Here.
Councillor Segler.
Here.
Councillor Pop.
Here.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Everybody's here. We're gonna skip the pledge of allegiance for tonight because it it doesn't really work on on Zoom, so let's go down to consent agenda, please.
Item four is approval of city council meeting minutes of April second and March twenty-third. Item eight is filing of correspondence, White Lakes Barred Department, April first meeting minutes, and Minnesota Department of Health quarterly water system report dated April first. Item ten A is to accept the resignation letter of Rich Hayes effective April sixth. And item eleven is approval of claims, payroll, and receipts.
Is everybody okay with the consent agenda? If so, could I get a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll make.
Motion by councillor Segler, support by councillor Zins. Roll call, please.
Mayor Breland.
Yes.
Councillor Zins.
Yes.
Segler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, now Becky, there's no, pardon me.
Could we get a letter to?
I can get a letter to Rich, yes.
For, thank you for his service. Thank you.
Becky, there's nobody that, guests and citizens?
Nobody that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, we'll go to reports from staff. Now, I know librarian Sue, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Tomorrow, we'll be mailing out a information, a four-and-a-half-by-eleven size kind of postcard to all the residences and businesses in White Lakes, and it just tells lets people know what our online services are at this time, and to get a library card, if you don't, to call us. What we have for free, how to get into overdrive, and different links that we have available, and our phone number, email address, and like that. So be watching for that. That goes out in the mail tomorrow, and that's by using a service called EDDM, which is every door delivery service, and it's quite a bit less expensive than regular postage. So I think it ends up being like nineteen cents per mailing. And what it does, it just goes to all the, you just, it's, doesn't need addresses, it just goes to all local residences, and so the post office just delivers it to every box. So that will, I think, will be very helpful to the public to know what we have, and that we are still here and available. We have some services for them. We've also been working on some different virtual programs. We have a survey monkey out right now, asking what people are interested in, things like arts and craft, virtual bingo, classes, exercise programs, a virtual book club. So we're seeing what the interest is out there for the public, and I can see some of these things continuing on even after we're done with the stay-at-home. There's a lot of fun activities and methods of bringing people together without them having to necessarily leave their home if they're not able to or just don't feel like it. So that's kind of exciting. I'm learning a lot. Lot more, getting a lot more tech savvy than I ever thought I'd like to be, but it's been, it's been fun. And then I just want to remind everybody, the public, that library cards are free, and it gives you access to a lot of free services. And if you don't have one, or your card is expired, or if you have fines on there, please give us a call or email us, and we will take care of you and make sure that you're able to access any of our electronic sources. That's it.
Anybody got any questions for Sue? Hearing none. Thank you, Sue. Kenny? Kenny Snatsing, you're on?
Yep, you got me?
Yep, there you are.
Okay. So, so far at Public Works, everything's doing, doing well. We've got the crew split. Everybody seems to be working fine with that schedule. We've been responding to the request of the Barrett, the COVID task team, as far as barricading off some picnic shelters, trying to keep the gatherings under control with the safe distancing idea. We have taped off the Beer Garden and the picnic shelter up at the Three Fields for that reason. The picnic shelters all down at the campground are barricaded off as well. The skate park is closed. The playgrounds are open. They have signs posted at them telling people to use at your own risk, that the equipment is not sanitized, but until we receive you know, notification from the task force that we'll do otherwise, that's the stance we're taking as of now. The dog park is now open. There are barricades up there keeping people from parking too close. I think there was some confusion with the barricades there. It's not that you can't use the dog park, it's that that area is real soft in the spring when the frost is going out, and we don't want people pulling up onto the grass, getting stuck. So the barricades are just there to help with the parking situation. There will be a new canister installed with baggies for the dog park. Tomorrow, I believe, it'll be installed. We, we just got it in, so that, that should be installed. Right now, there's still, people are still supplying their own bags, or there's some bags hanging there in a trash can, but there'll be something better there arriving shortly. We will be starting street sweeping. Hopefully, this week, we need the temperatures to be just a hair warmer during the day, not below freezing for the street sweeper, since it uses water and, and some of the sand in the curb lines is still a little bit frozen on cold days like today. So I, I think the temperature will be okay starting Wednesday to get the street sweeper out and rolling. The guys have been patching potholes. We got our tar trailer back, which we shared joint with Towne White and Aurora. We've all been taking turns with it, and, and we received it back today. So we'll be out and about patching potholes in between that and sweeping. I have ambulance requiring a little bit of service tomorrow. Zach will be coming in actually tomorrow to take care of that. Mel was able to get ahold of Premier Specialty, get us all the parts that we think we need, and Zach will take care of that. Last thing is, we've got a lot of applicants. It's a good thing. A lot of applicants for summer hire. We're just gonna have to kind of play it by ear as far as the whole COVID-19 dilemma. How many people we're gonna need and want to have working this summer? That'll all, I'm sure, unfold as time goes on.
You good?
Yep, and anything else?
Anybody got any questions for Kenny? If not, thank you, Kenny. Jake, go on, move into Public Works, Jake, or Public Utilities, Jake. Jake Barron, you on? He was earlier.
He's on. Let me unmute him.
I got it.
You there, Jake?
Yeah, you guys hear me?
Can see you, too.
All right, perfect. So, couple of things. Waste Water Plant's been getting about three hundred thousand extra gallons a day over this last month. Just a reminder for the public, if you're if your sump pumps going into the sewer system, please switch that back to going outside into your backyard or wherever you rode it. Lake's been giving us some trouble. Our color's been rising, and turbidity's been going up that we've been taking in for influence at the water plant, so we've been working hard this last week and finally got the water plant to come back around, but twice a year, this happens. So if you notice any discoloration in your water, that's what that's about. But other than that, things are going good. Guys are handling their COVID schedules just fine, so.
Okay, any questions for Jake? Not, thank you, Jake. Mel, are you on? Ambulance director?
Hello, I'm here.
Okay, what's your update?
Um, what is my update? We have had some problems filling all of our calls during the day, so we added another crew on during the day, two EMTs for a transfer crew. So now we have one medic and three EMTs on during the day to cover all our calls. We had an incident last week when our mayor had to drive an ambulance on a nine-one-one call. Not that we don't appreciate it, Mayor Breland, but we're, we're gonna try not to do that. So we added another crew on. It's not really filling up like I had hoped it would. I kinda knew it wouldn't. So I think we have to have some further discussions along with that. I've called Carefree and New Journey, our assisted living facilities in the area, and we have plans in place with them for responding to calls at their facilities. We're trying not to go all the way in to the patient's residence, or trying to get them out to the common area, which has been working all right. So we don't have to expose them, all the elderly, to all our germs. I received a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health for fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. Part of that is for, to be used for staffing, so that's kind of where the pay is coming from for this extra transfer crew that we've put on. Trying to make that stretch out as far as we can. We've also added a medic on during the night to cover nine-one-ones and any transfers. I'm kind of toning down, taking transfers out of other facilities right now. We've taken a couple, the last couple of weeks, but I've gotten a lot of calls during the night and have just turned them down immediately. I don't wanna stretch us too far, because we're already getting I wouldn't say more calls already, but it's gonna happen, so I don't wanna poop everyone out before we start getting them. What else do I have? I receive updates from Essentia, from Essentia, Virginia, every day on what they're doing and what, what the whole Iron Range is doing in prepping for COVID calls. We've gotten a lot of donations for PPE from the public, and we really, really, really appreciate it. We all have cloth masks here, and we were able to give a bunch out. I gave a bunch out this weekend when we did the parade, because a lot of people showed up for our parade, the Easter Bunny, without any masks, so I made sure everyone had masks for the parade. Other than that, we're just kind of holding tight, sitting and waiting.
Thank you. Any, anybody got any questions for Mel? All right, thanks, Mel.
Yep.
Becky, anything?
Only agenda items, but I wanted to make sure Shannon Sweeney is on the call.
I'm on the call, Becky.
Okay, great. I thought that might, thank you.
You're welcome.
Attorney Brunfeld.
Mayor and council, just agenda items tonight.
Okay, thanks. Did I miss any staff?
Mayor, I do have a report from Wade.
Okay.
So Wade got ahold of me. He sent his report. He said he was out to the course. The golf course has wintered real well. He said everything came through in decent shape. According to info from the governor, he is able to perform the, the normal springtime maintenance out there to get the course in order, so his plan is to schedule the needed maintenance and have the course ready once things are cleared that he can open it up. So we also did get some information, went online just to, to try to find more information on golf courses, and there are thirty-two states that are allowing golfing. Minnesota is not, and Wisconsin are not one of them. Unfortunately, Iowa, North Dakota, and South Dakota are, so, but that's, that's kind of where he's at on that, and, and Wade feels that there'll be information coming weekly as far as golf course openings, so. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on down to reports from city councillors. Councillor Zins.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to bring up, I had a talk with Mel the other day, and she brought up the, putting on another crew for transfers. Obviously, she said she's having a hard time getting the numbers, filling that in. What I would like to do is schedule an adjourned meeting for this Thursday evening, if possible, to go over, first of all, we need to talk about an assistant ambulance director position. And then I'd like to go over this other crew that Mel's trying to get put on and get those slots filled and a pay scale for that, which I think is something that we all need to discuss. And, you know, like Mel said, she did get a grant. We've got some money available. But we don't want the burnout level to the point where we're not getting anybody sign up, and especially when we have members in our own community that may be in need of them to come, so. Anybody open to having an adjourned meeting on Thursday evening?
Yeah, I can call one day. What time?
Five o'clock.
Five work for everybody? Five work for everybody?
That works for me.
Dave, you can go ahead and make a motion to schedule that meeting tonight.
Okay. Could we do that? Could we do that like at, could we do that like at six-thirty on Thursday? I have something going on. I don't know if I'll be back before five o'clock.
Yeah.
I can do it at six-thirty.
Okay.
Mel?
Would you make a motion on that, then, Dave?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we hold an adjourned meeting to discuss ambulance issues. EMS for six-thirty Thursday evening, which would be, what, the sixteen?
Yep. Can, can I have support?
I'll support that.
Support by councillor Pop. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Breland?
Yes.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson.
Chris, you on?
Oh.
Yes.
He's muted.
I think she muted herself, yeah.
Okay, I muted myself. Here. Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Is that all, councillors?
Yeah, so that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Segler.
Yeah, just got a couple of quick updates. I talked to Wade today. They're just doing the end-of-the-season maintenance and cleaning still at the arena. That's going well. And I know the joint rec coordinator is taking applicants for lifeguarding, and we'll see how that all pans out, I guess.
Forgot about that, yeah, okay. Councillor Pop.
All right, I have one thing that'll come up in the agenda later, but just kind of an update on Blight. Had a conversation with Sandy today. She said compliance is continuing to happen. It's, it's slowly happening. We've towed some vehicles this spring, and she's gonna start concentrating on on some of the yards that are, are in need of coming into compliance. She is doing all her correspondence over the mail. She's a little bit hesitant on the face-to-face right now. So she just asked me to remind citizens that if you do get a letter in the mail from her and you have any questions, please contact City Hall. City Hall will get a message to Sandy, and then they, the homeowner can leave their phone number or a time to get ahold of them, and we can work through it, so. And that's it until the agenda items.
Okay. Councillor Peterson.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, thank you. And the only thing I have today, I would just like to really, really thank the Chamber of Commerce and that group of people that put on that Easter, Easter parade. I had, I had many, many calls on that, so I thought that went really good, and, and I know lots of kids were out on the street, and they really enjoyed it, so. I just wanna compliment them on doing a great job, so. We'll move on. Full business. Under the COVID-19 golf course, I, I think, Dan, I think you, you talked about it. I don't think there's an update at this point. Normally, we don't open the course till the first or second weekend of May anyway, so I think we're just looking for further guidance from the governor on this. Is that about it, Dan?
I think that pretty much sums it up, yeah. We're, I think, is hoping that that early May deadline is gonna free some things up, and Wade does have a bunch of information that he received from the Gulf USGA, US Golf Association, on tips for you know, in case that it does open with, the threat of the virus is still gonna be there, so there's a number of things that can, you know, we can limit to one golfer per cart. Removing the, the flag and raising the pin. If you hit the pin, that's considered in, so there are a number of things that that could help along that lines to hopefully open courses early, because I think it's, it's important for for people to be able to get out and enjoy that outside exercise and activity, so.
Okay. Fisherman's Point Campground. Dan, you got, I wanna update on that or thoughts on that?
Yeah, basically, the plan there is to stay consistent with what the state is doing. Obviously, the state has the state parks, which are open during the day for day use, but not for overnight camping. So we're gonna continue to stay the course on that and probably continue to go from council meeting to council meeting before we make a decision as to when we would possibly start allowing reservations. I think we, we definitely need to have a, a window of time knowing that the shelter-in-place restrictions will be lifted before we start accepting any reservations and then have to deal with cancellations, so. So until, until further notice, we, we're not gonna allow any campers out there, including seasonals. I know Al had contacted me. He was questioning whether his helper could bring his camper out, and I conferred with Mayor Veeland, and we both came into consensus that for right now, we're not gonna let any camper out there, because it's just gonna open a can of worms, so. But that's kind of the, the course of action we're gonna take there, so. And then once we do open, we're even in some pretty good discussions with, with Al at possible ways we may have to try to limit some of the, the group exposure out there, even once we do take reservations, maybe not allow field camping and some of the double sites to make them back to singles, and only one camper per, per unit to help maintain that that distancing, so.
Any other council have any questions or comments on the campground?
Do. For the seasonals, most of the people have paid for them already. Haven't they?
Yeah, everybody has paid their deposit. I talked to Betsy this morning. She said two or three have paid their entire amount. So Betsy and I talked about that, and obviously, there are gonna be, there is gonna be some days where they weren't able to have their camper out there, so I believe that the opening date was supposed to be April seventeenth, so. I think the plan is, is we will take and divide the number of nights that from April seventeenth until October thirty-first is, come up with a, a daily rate. And then if it comes time to issuing credits, if that's what the council agrees to, that we would pursue it that way to have a, a partial payment, that a lot of the folks haven't paid the full amount, so that could just be an adjusted amount when they pay for the rest of the year, once, once we can allow campers in there.
I did talk to Representative Lizardard last Thursday, and I told him this was a very important discussion for us, and I'm sure for lots of cities. He was gonna be checking with the governor's office and letting me know as soon as he can what the governor's thinking on campground, so. Soon as we know something, I will get it out to everybody, so.
Okay.
Everybody good with that? Playgrounds and skateboard parks, I think Kenny covered that. The playgrounds are still up. Uh, the playground just still, skateboard park is closed. What's everybody feeling on the playgrounds? I mean, I've driven them by and I haven't really seen a whole lot of people using them. Go ahead, Chris.
Sorry. Um, so there was a lot of complaints last week that all of the playgrounds had multiple kids playing on them. And they said by the, the one by the trailer court had a lot of people at them. And the one down at the point also had a lot of people on them.
Becky, did, has the COVID, uh, response team made a decision on them yet?
They're kind of leaving it up to each individual city. Aurora, for example, there's no way they could fence off every park they have. Um, I know the, the school, no one's allowed on the property, so theirs is closed. And they kind of just left it up to each city. I know Aurora is putting signs up like we did. Um, Town of White did close theirs. And, um, I don't, I think Boabix was still open too. So it's kind of up to us. They didn't make a directive to close everything.
What's everybody thinking? Chris, you got comments?
Um, yeah, I was thinking, just because it seems like there are a lot of kids that are playing and, you know, they're kids. They're not doing six feet apart or any type of social distancing. So I'm thinking that we probably should do something, whether we put those signs up, just do something.
I think Kenny already did put signs up.
Oh, they are up, okay.
Yeah.
And I think, um, with Tim's input too, he felt like the kids need a place to go. And that hopefully the parents are monitoring it a little better, um, that they would patrol as well. And kind of keep an eye on things a little bit here.
I think if it, if, if people start seeing more kids there, you know, we'll have to address it. Is everybody okay with leaving it the way it is for right now?
If, I think that's probably fine to leave it the way it is for people that are watching, that parents that do have younger kids to, to take note of that and hopefully that they're going there with their children to help monitor the, the distancing part, so. I know sometimes it's, you know, the older kids are able to go to the playground on their own. And like Chris said, it's, it's pretty tough for them to, to understand and maintain that distancing. But I think we'll just stay the course and, and hopefully, uh, until the, the respond, that the committee comes up with something different. Do you think we could, uh, put an ad in the shopper? That, you know, towards, for the parents that if, uh, these kids aren't watched or somebody's supervising that they're keeping a distancing or social distancing that we're gonna end up having to close these, uh, campground, or not the campgrounds, but the playgrounds? So I'm just curious if anybody thought that might help?
What's it?
It certainly couldn't hurt. You know, as a reminder.
I can do that.
Okay, we'll have Becky put a ad in the shopper then, just reminding them on that, okay?
Yeah, cause I, I'd hate to see them shut down, but I agree with Chris. A couple of times when I've gone by, there's been a lot of kids and they're not together, are not separated like they should be. So.
And I think in some instances, it could be families. So, you know, someone could speculate that it's a bunch of kids, but they could be living in the same house too.
Good.
I'll chime, oh, sorry, I wanna chime in quick. I drive by the park quite a bit and, um, up by the Catholic church. There's a lot of times, there's quite a few kids with no adult supervision at, at all, um, you know. I mean, to me, if the signs are there, it's at your own risk, that's on them. But there are, there are groups of kids that are up there playing quite a bit. Um, it would be nice for the parents to remember, the sooner we get this over with, life go back to normal for everybody. That's, you know. Practice your distancing.
I'll mention it to Tim, Brian, that if the squads go by there, if they see lots of kids, to maybe stop and have a chat with them.
Perfect.
Okay. Next item, next item is the commercial utility bills. I know Becky's got at least one call uh, from one of the closed businesses that's really having a hard time. What I'd like to do on this is I'd like to wait on this. Um, the East Range Joint Powers Board, um, came up with a loan slash grant program. And they have till this Friday to fill it out. Um, they did get a survey. Twenty-four businesses on the East Range did answer the survey. Now they can fill out for a grant or loan. Um, and the board will be meeting on it next Tuesday to award those grants. So I'm hoping the, the businesses that are closed right now, we can get them some grant money next week and that might help, so. But if we can't, or if it continues, we might have to address that. I don't know if anybody else got any comments on that. If everybody's okay with that, we'll just wait and see how that grant program goes next week. Um, and then the next item on here Becky has is direct deposit option for part-time payroll. She put it on there. She's never done payroll before. Just as, as a, like as council, you could get your checks uh, direct deposited in the bank and so could part-time employees. If everybody's okay with that, Beck, do we need a motion on that?
Not really. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, being it's the first time we've offered it to part-time. And it doesn't mean everyone has to do it. They choose to enroll if they want. If they don't want to, they'll get a paper check.
Okay, so, all right, okay. Hand me got any issue with that? Okay, we'll go down to item B, twenty-twenty street infrastructure improvement. Um, to approve the supplement to the agreement professional services between City of White Lakes and S C H for the following modifications. Remove the sidewalk along Endover Road, widen sidewalk along South Hope Drive from four feet to five feet for twenty-twenty. Street infrastructure improvement project in the amount of nineteen hundred. They had to come back out and resurvey. Um, and we did, we did approve that moving forward, that I'd just like a motion to approve this change order.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order from S C H.
Motion by Counselor.
Nineteen hundred.
Counselor Zin, support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Segler. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes.
Counselor Zin?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Motion carries. Um, second item, award the project from bid opening April eighth. Low bid submitted by Masali Batuminas of Gilbert, Minnesota for one million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Emily, are you on? You got an update on that for me?
Yes, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yep, perfect. I can see you too.
Good. Um, I don't have any updates other than you guys should have gotten the bid tab with all of the, all of the bids. Um, kind of laid out and calculated there. Um, if you guys have any questions, I can answer them now. If there's any questions on the bidding, otherwise, uh, this is the low bid. And you should have a letter from us also, um, with our recommendation.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Emily? If not, I'll take a motion to approv, approve the low bid.
I'll make that motion to approve that bid, uh, Masali bid for one million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty cents.
Motion by Counselor Segler, support?
I'll support the motion.
Support by Counselor Peterson. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes.
Counselor Zin?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Motion carries. And this is the, the, the last one on there, or the next one on there is the agreement professional services dated April thirteenth, twenty-twenty between the City of White Lakes, S C H for twenty-twenty street and infrastructure improvements, construction services in the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand, including expenses and equipment. And that is not to exceed that. We haven't done this, but we've never really done this big a road project. They're gonna have to have a, the small ones, we've usually had staff on there, but we cannot tie up staff for twelve, fourteen weeks. So Emily, any, any, uh, anything you wanna comment on that?
Um, no, the, the only thing I would say is this just covers, um, standard construction observation that we do. We'll have somebody on site. Um, we will use our time diligently. You know, if there's stuff that we don't need to be out there for full time, we will not be, have somebody just standing out there either. Um, but it, it, it does cover all of that. It also covers the survey work that we do for the project. Um, such as the construction staking and stuff like that. So other than that, um, unless there's any questions, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Any questions for Emily? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Zin, support?
I'll support that.
Support by Counselor Pop. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes.
Counselor Zin?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Motion carries. Um, next on there is project financing. Shannon Sweeney, David Brownson Associates, City of White Lakes Resolution twenty-twenty dash zero one two. Shannon, are you on?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, there are two resolutions in your packet for consideration. Uh, one is establishing a public hearing for, uh, a proposed tax abatement. And the other is authorizing us to essentially initiate the process for putting project financing in place. Uh, have a recommendations letter in your packet that's based on the engineering estimate that, well, I should say, project bids that have been received now along with engineering costs and financing costs that bring a total project cost to about two million four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, we have an I triple R B grant that's, uh, that will cover two hundred and forty thousand dollars of the project costs. And we have a balance of two million one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that we're looking to finance. Uh, based on the bids received and current market conditions for bonds, uh, we're estimating that the annual average debt service, if this is structured over a twenty-year term. And we have a preliminary schedule, bond schedule included in your packet. But ultimately, we, we're suggesting that payments will be about a hundred and four thousand dollars per year when we include statutory debt coverage, which is something that statute requires us to demonstrate the ability to actually pay a hundred and five percent. We work off of a number of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars per year in debt service. We allocate that debt service between utilities and property taxes and other sources of revenue. And so you'll see in my memo, I outline, you know, projected tax impact based on an average levy of seventy-one thousand dollars per year that would first be collected in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, in our past discussions, we've talked about, uh, offsetting a portion of that levy through franchise fees, through storm sewer revenues. We're collecting a fee month, or we're collecting a fee in our storm sewer utility that we're applying to debt service. We're not applying all of that to debt service at this point, and so we have some ability to offset some of that levy. But we also have, uh, bonds that will be paid off in twenty-twenty-three, uh, that I believe are partially supported by tax levy. And so we have the ability to manage this levy component of the debt service over the next couple of years. Hopefully with some offset in our levy that we collect in twenty-twenty-three that will help reduce, significantly reduce the property tax impact as a result of this project. Uh, again, we're, we're pledging storm sewer fees for a significant portion of the debt service already, about fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, we have additional revenues, uh, beyond that amount that we may use to offset that tax levy as I previously mentioned. Uh, we're suggesting that water rates would need to increase by about two point eight percent, uh, which would equate to about ninety-four cents per month for residential customer. Sanitary sewer rates by about one point three percent, which again, uh, is about a seventy-one cent per month increase on a fixed fee for a residential customer. Uh, those are the anticipated impacts of borrowing the money to pay for the project. Happy to answer questions, but we have some, we have some ability as a city council to manage that property tax impact. You know, through the, through the avenues that I've mentioned, including, you know, additional transfer from storm sewer utility. Uh, we have some bonds that are gonna be paid off. We have franchise fees that we're collecting, all of those through our budget process. We can do a pretty good job of managing this debt to reduce that impact. Um, the method of sale is probably the most interesting part of the conversation. Uh, you know, as things got interesting over the last month, uh, we saw some competitive sales that went to market and were withdrawn. Essentially, there was almost a freeze in investment that was made in the purchase of general obligation bonds. What the, what folks quickly did though is they went to essentially doing negotiated bank placements uh, as a, as a source or method of finance in order to place bonds, uh, for projects that are in process. And we're suggesting something similar to that. Ultimately, we're working with a placement agent that will solicit bids from numerous lending institutions that would directly purchase the bonds. Through that process, we actually have reduced issuance costs because we're not purchasing a credit rating from standard emporers. We're, Becky will be happy to hear that, by the way. Uh, we're, we're, uh, we're, our, 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 there's no underwriting expense. There's a bank placement fee, but that's lower than what we typically pay an underwriter. And, you know, our, our financial advisory fees are actually lower because there's less work that we do in this process. And so you might ask, why wouldn't we normally do this method of sale? Well, normally when we're doing a competitive sale, we're soliciting bids from both banks and institutional investors. And that competition usually creates the best result. At this point in our market, it's still not quite back yet where I can confidently say that that's the appropriate way to proceed. So what I did do is I contacted a placement agent that solicited some initial reaction from, uh, lenders that would be interested in purchasing the bonds. And that's the interest rate I used on the attached analysis, which was a two point three five percent fixed for the entire twenty-year term. Uh, that, that, that preliminary indication was far better than anything that I thought I would see on a competitive sale at this point in time. Uh, both through interest rate and also as a result of the reduced issuance costs we have in this process. And we can put this in place much more quickly than we can a competitive sale because through a competitive sale process, we have to wait for the credit rating agency to do their interview, conduct their due diligence and provide us with the credit rating that we have to have in place before we take bids. And that process probably takes at least three weeks right now, if not a little bit longer. And we think we can have a proposal in the next week or so, uh, through a competitive bank placement, which helps us all sleep a little better at night having a fixed interest rate on a large construction contract that we've awarded. And so, uh, all of these things are factors in my recommendation to work on a negotiated bank placement. Uh, we would intend to do, use R W Baird as the placement agent. They're a large, uh, Wisconsin-based underwriter. Uh, they also provide placement agent services. Uh, they're an active bidder in the marketplace. Uh, one of the largest underwriting firms in the country as a matter of fact. And so, uh, we've worked with them a lot. Uh, we have pretty great confidence in the work that they do in helping us to find the lowest overall cost of borrowing. And so, uh, our recommendation is ultimately that we work through this process of a negotiated bank placement, working with R W Baird as a placement agent. Um, again, uh, our recommendations on the structure are twenty-year term on the project financing. Ultimately, the call date or the date at which bonds can be prepaid or paid off uh, will likely be shorter than what we see in competitive sale, but in no event would it be more than ten years. Um, we, we, uh, again, we do not recommend purchasing standard emporers rating for the proposed method of sale. That rating would cost us, uh, somewhere in the magnitude of about eleven thousand five hundred dollars on a normal competitive sale. And we're saving that cost by the method of sale that I'm proposing. Uh, the document that I have in your packet, the resolution that authorizes us to start this process is called a triggering resolution. And what it essentially says is that if we're able to solicit a proposal for three percent as a fixed interest rate or less, the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign a bond purchase agreement that we can use to essentially put final award documents in place for council approval. It allows us to essentially do the sale on any day of the week, um, rather than waiting for a specific council meeting date. Uh, that can be a little bit important right now because we see a lot of bonds coming to market in the next two weeks. Uh, that can be a little bit important right now because we see a lot of bonds coming to market in the next two weeks. Uh, there's going to be a large volume, and we'd like to pick a day when there's a little bit less volume in this particular instance so that we can make sure we're working with folks that are engaged in giving us good bids. And so, uh, that's part of the reason for the triggering resolution is so that we have a little bit more flexibility in our timing. Uh, but that triggering resolution allows the mayor and city clerk to, uh, essentially sign off on a sale, which is then ratified by the city council at your next regular meeting. Uh, at that meeting, the second resolution comes into play, which is a resolution calling a public hearing on the proposed tax abatement. Uh, under Minnesota statute, and this is, this is probably the last topic I'll discuss before asking you for questions. It's ultimately, we're looking to make a tax levy as a pledge for a portion of this bond payment, and that's a tax levy for that portion, that street reconstruction related. Uh, cities are created by Minnesota statute. Minnesota statute governs the process and procedure for how we can borrow money and what we can spend it on. And in, you know, in many instances, we're levying special assessments for street reconstruction, and we're using authority granted under a separate Minnesota statute that says if you assess at least twenty percent of a project cost, you can issue bonds or improvement bonds under Minnesota statute four twenty-nine. We're, we made a decision some months ago that we, we preferred not to specially assess for this project. And so we pointed to a different statute that essentially is called Tax Abatement Authority. Ultimately, at the end of the day, what we're doing is we're holding a public hearing to authorize a levy pledge, a tax levy pledge to make a payment on a portion of this bond issue. Uh, that statute requires us to make a link between properties that receive some form of benefit from the proposed project and the property taxes that they pay. Uh, and ultimately, they have to at least equate to the principal amount to the bond issue. Now, to be absolutely clear, and I've mentioned this before, the parcels that we list in this public hearing notice do not pay taxes in any different manner than any other property owner in the community, any other tax-paying property owner in the community. It's simply a procedural requirement to make that linkage, that linkage between the amount of taxes that they pay and the principal on that portion of the bond that's attributed to street reconstruction. Uh, it seems like a, a little bit of a ridiculous procedure to have to go through, but it's what statute dictates in order for us to apply a tax levy for that portion of the project cost. And so we follow the procedure, we hold a public hearing, we take public comment, and then we're able to award the sale of bonds. Uh, I'm happy to answer questions regarding that part of the process as well. I, I hope it's not terribly confusing.
Anybody got any questions for Shannon?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, Shannon, I had in front of the council a resolution to schedule the public hearing. And then the second resolution, I'm probably in error, I thought, um, to approve the issuance would need to be done at the public hearing, or can both be approved tonight?
Both can be approved tonight. The resolution approving the issuance enables the mayor and you to sign a bond purchase agreement if we have an interest rate of three percent or less. Uh, but additional council action is required to award the sale of bonds, and that would be after the public hearing.
Okay, so Mayor, there should be two resolutions, uh, twelve and thirteen that could be approved tonight. They're in your packet. One is numbered, one is not.
Okay.
And now, Mayor and Council, just one other thing, but, uh, this is Mitch. Just on the, uh, so I, I noticed on the agenda under the, uh, there is the scheduling of the public hearing. Um, as far as that hearing notice, this is an issue that arises really more under the guidance of your bond councils, and you know, that's one of the areas we, we do not provide the city any advice or guidance on bond issues. So as far as the actual notice that'll be published regarding the public hearing on this, I just want to make sure that, um, as part of approving, uh, the scheduling of the public hearing and the posting of the notice, that make sure you have that notice, uh, reviewed by bond counsel and make it subject to re- review by bond counsel, just in case there has to be any particular technical language in the notice of public hearing that would have to be run by bond counsel. Because that's frankly not anything that I would be knowledgeable of as a general city attorney. I would not be able to advise you on any technical requirements, uh, when you're dealing with bonding issues.
Okay. Everybody got that? So I'm looking for a motion for, to pass the resolution number twenty twenty dash zero one two, resolution calling for a public hearing regarding tax abatement in connection with certain public projects, and that is for April twenty-seventh at six thirty. Is that correct, Becky?
Yes. April twenty-seventh at six thirty, yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion to, uh, accept resolution twenty twenty dash zero one two.
Motion by Counselor Segler, support.
I'll second the motion.
Support by Counselor Peterson. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
And then Mayor, did you want that pending review by bond?
Yes. Pending review by the bond counsel. Correct, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor of Reeland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion, motion carries. So then the second one, Becky, is this the one that says notice of public hearing on tax abatement and issuance of bonds? Exhibit A?
Right.
So that would be twenty twenty dash zero one three?
Correct.
Shannon, did you have something?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor. It would be the resolution approving the issuance of up to two million one hundred and eighty-five thousand general obligation tax abatement and utility revenue bonds, series twenty twenty B, subject to the approval of the mayor and city clerk and ratification by the city council.
Okay, that was on the back page of that. Yep. Looking for a motion for the resolution approving the issuance of up to two million one hundred and eighty-five thousand general obligation tax abatement and utility revenue bond series twenty twenty B, subject to the approval of the mayor and city clerk and ratification by the city council. That's the one I'm looking for motion on.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Zins, support.
I'll support that.
Support by Counselor Pop. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Good, motion carries. Anything else, Shannon?
No, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving to nine C, um, attached is the final payment request and closeout documents of phase two of wastewater treatment facility. The payment request does include a change order of five, six thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars. Uh, is Brian, or is Brian on?
Yep. Can you, can you hear me all right?
I can see you too.
All right. Good evening. Thanks for having me. Uh, so yes, this is the final pay request and closeout documents for the phase two wastewater treatment, uh, facility improvements. Um, in the packet, you'll see the final pay request, lean waivers, ICE one thirty-four, some consent surety. Um, the, the one thing I did have to bring your attention was a request from the contractor under change order five. Um, this relates to some issues with the, uh, the new cover, which as we worked through the issues, found out that, uh, is not necessarily the contractor's responsibility. I think when I was with you a month or so ago, we mentioned some warranty items. Originally, we were looking this as a warranty item. Um, as all the facts came to light, uh, we did discover an issue with, uh, a relief valve on the digester that was repaired previously to this one. Um, and so that was part of the cause of it. Um, and really what happened was the, uh, pressure relief valve on the primary digester failed, uh, ruptured the disc. Uh, that caused pressure drop in the other digester, which caused the cover to sink. Um, and as we were working through that, we had some heavy snows, so there was some snow load on that secondary cover. Once the primary, um, relief valve seal was replaced, the cover cannot be floated because of the extensive snow load. And so Lakehead Construction was helping us through this process as a potential warranty item. Um, and again, as we uncovered everything, it really was not their fault for any of this happening. And they were actually great assistants in helping the city, uh, get snow off the cover, uh, bringing some pumps in that we needed to transfer some water. And I asked them just to request, um, uh, what they thought was fair for their services. Um, and they did actually give a very fair number for their time. Um, they're not charging any overhead or profit. Um, and I also know that their management time on this, they could have requested quite a bit more than they did. Um, and so I think they saw it as an item that, um, you know, we kind of proceeded with as a warranty item. We didn't know it was going to be a change order. They wanted to keep costs down for the city, and so they've come back with this amount for the change order, um, which I think is very fair. I think they could have easily requested more than this. Um, and for those reasons, I would recommend payment to Lakehead. And then, um, if the council approves the change order file pay request, this would effectively close that project out with Lakehead. We've received over the last few weeks all the other documents we need to close the project out with PFA. Um, and then there is a one-year warranty on the project, which started at substantial completion, which was back in October. And so they'll have about six months here till October thirty-first of warranty on that project, which would cover any, um, materials or workmanship that was done with that project. Um, and so I guess I'll stop there and answer any questions or maybe.
So my question for you, Brian, is I see the final, the final pay request is fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars ninety cents. That includes change order number five, correct?
Correct. Yep, that includes that change order. There was, we were previously holding a small amount for some final paperwork, which they have since submitted. So you are correct.
Okay. So from the council, if there's any, any council have any questions for Brian?
Yeah, just a question, and I don't know if, if Brian, if you can answer it or Becky can help, is, is there still funding in that PFA account to cover that amount? Will Becky be able to file for reimbursement, or will some of that have to come strictly out of the city budget for this year?
Um, Becky, do you know the answer for cer- for sure? I, normally the PFA carries a five percent contingency and, uh, which would have amounted to approximately sixty thousand dollars on this bid. And previous to this, there was already a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in change order. And so they, that would have been over that five percent contingency. Um, Becky, in the past on those other change orders, were those processed through PFA?
They were. Um, I could double check on that in the morning, Dan, to be certain. I thought there was enough left over to get this one submitted, but I'll double check on that in the morning.
So, so sometimes in that PFA loan, there may be other funds aside from construction that were in the entire package, so they may have some extra funds to help all of these overages, but usually on the construction costs, there's a five percent contingency in the loan.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I mean, not that it's going to have any bearing on whether we pay the bill or not. I was just curious where the funding may have to come from, so.
Okay. So I'd like to have a motion to approve the fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars ninety cents, which would include the number five change order.
I'll make the motion to approve the final pay request, number fifteen of Lakehead contractors or constructors, an amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety cents, which includes change order number five.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Segler. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Then the next item is item D, um, wastewater treatment facility improvement scheduled public hearing. Brian?
Yes, so, uh, we need to schedule a public hearing, uh, for amending the facility plan, um, which is really the technicality in the MPCA approval of the project. Uh, back in December, the council authorized new triggering filters and then a, uh, screen for the headworks to remove larger debris. And so to add that to the funding package, we needed to do, uh, a facility plan amendment, and part of that is a public hearing. At that public hearing, there'll be a presentation. If you recall, I, it'll be pretty much the same presentation I gave you in December when I looked at the needs of the project and the cost evaluation. But we do have to have a public hearing, uh, to meet the statute. Um, we've tentatively, we're going to schedule that for, uh, May eleventh. The fact date, Becky?
Hmm, correct.
May eleventh, um, and so we, uh, I think we're going to have a comfortable Zoom platform if we are not able to meet in person at that time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, and that'll work well with the overall project schedule because on that same meeting, I will probably have, um, be looking for authorization for bidding of that project. And so we'll also have some other, um, items to talk about. So the public hearing will probably be fifteen minutes, just to kind of go over the basics of the project. Uh, and then we can collect any public comments, and then we'll also have a resolution to pass accepting the amended facility plan.
And then, and then we'll call for bids that day?
Uh, and then, yes, and then we would, uh, uh, you guys would approve us to go, uh, solicit for bids. And I'll just pause here if you guys need to make a motion on the public hearing. Um, and I can offer a little bit more update on the wastewater plant if, if that would work.
Okay, so I'm looking for a, a motion to approve the public hearing for the proposed wastewater treatment facility improvements for six thirty on Monday, May eleventh.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Zins, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Peterson. Any other discussion? On, um, roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Brian, you want to give us a, a update?
Yeah, so currently where, where we are at in the design process is we have submitted updated plans and specs to MPCA because they need to review the additions that were made. So those were submitted at the end of March. Um, I had, uh, our first electronic design review meeting with, with Jake last Thursday, which I think went pretty well. And I'm hoping to schedule another one of those in a couple of weeks where we can screen share and he can see our drawings um, and kind of work through some of those details. As we discussed on the eleventh, I'll be looking for authorization to bid, and we're planning a bid date of June eleventh right now, which would potentially fit your council schedule for awarding the second week in June. There's a lot of ifs about that, though, when it comes to the funding. And so right now, in this year's funding package through PFA, the city has already been bookmarked for about nine million dollars in grants. And so if we bid the project, uh, it looks affordable based on those existing grants. You could award the project based on that nine million dollars in grants with the rest of it being uh, a low-interest loan through PFA. Now, I'm so working on final cost estimates. Right now, I would say the project overall cost is probably looking at between twelve and fifteen million. And so a nine million grant um, may leave you with a little bit more debt service than preferred. And so once the bids come in, we can look at that funding package and determine, is that funding enough? Um, there's a small chance that in last year's funding package, if they have any overfunds, maybe they could try to increase that grant to help the project move forward. So that would be a, a second option. And then the third option would be waiting until the twenty twenty-one funding cycle comes in. So the twenty twenty funding cycle ends on June thirtieth, so you would need to award the project prior to June thirtieth to use last year's funds. If you don't use those funds, you'll roll over to the next year. Um, and there is a small potential that you could lose those funds. It's, they're not guaranteed. Um, but part of what plays into that is a bonding bill. So between now and the bid date, um, I think the session is supposed to end May eighteenth. So between now and the bid date, um, I think the session is supposed to end May eighteenth. There's a bonding bill, we'll know where the funds were divided, how much went to the wastewater programs. And have a sense of the likelihood of your project getting funded with twenty twenty-one fiscal year financing. And so if we come to May thirtieth and there's no bonding bill, and we have some questions, we could by addendum just push the bid back several weeks. And let session roll through and see what happens. If we getting cold feet that with COVID nineteen and everything else going on, it's not gonna be a bonding year, we're questioning it, we could delay the bid, or we could push it back. If it looks like there's gonna be a bonding bill, we can move forward with the bid. We still have nine million already sitting here that you could just decide to use. And we can evaluate the bid price to see if you can afford it on that nine million dollar grant. Or we could hold the bid and wait for twenty twenty-one financing. So in the bid package, we're gonna have a ninety-day hold period, which means you have the ability to wait ninety days to award the project. And the contractor has no repercussions to take against you. So that would give you to approximately September eighth or ninth to award the project. The twenty twenty-one fiscal year financing list gets published in August. And so we would see that list come out and have time to evaluate whether you can award to the contractor if we've waited to that second funding cycle. And so it's sound, there's a lot of pieces going on. It's, I think it sounds more complicated than it is. Um, but to summarize, if you, we stay on the schedule we have to bid June eleventh, we have time in there to adjust. If we're worried about happening, we can cancel the bid or push it back. Um, if a bonding bill looks good, we can bid the project, see where the costs come in, and then work with funding agencies to get a feel for um, will funding be there for us if we, if we wait till the twenty twenty-one fiscal year? And so um, go, go ahead, Mayor. Looks like you have something to chat.
Question I have then is, um, the Mercury project, what's your estimate for the Mercury part of the project? Cause I know it's the Mercury and phase three.
Yeah, so the, the Mercury, um, you know, I haven't been done. I believe my estimate was about eight million going back to last year. I haven't updated that yet. And with current construction costs, last year the market was high. This year, I don't think we have a feel for how things are gonna shake out with, with the pandemic and everything. So I think that Mercury is probably in the eight to nine million range with a grant of close to seven million.
Right, we get eighty percent, eight, whatever that number comes in, we get eighty percent of.
Eighty percent up to seven million grant, so you would have to go over close to a nine million dollar project not, not to get the full grant.
Okay, and then the phase three then, um, wasn't that, that, that is also an eighty percent or was that a hundred percent grant?
Um, that would be eighty percent as well. The difference is, is when the funding amount for last year's project list, we had not added in the new triggering filters or the screen.
Right.
And so they based your grant off of a lower project cost. So they've already set aside two point six million, around two to two point six million for you based on last year's cost. And so that's where about that nine million dollar grant comes from. Um, but with revaluing the triggering filters, your project cost went up. And we can't, they can't adjust the grant amount until the next funding cycle. And so the nine million is sitting there for you. But to get the full eighty percent potential out of those grants, you'd have to go into the next funding cycle. And take somewhat of a risk to say, yep, to be funded again. We're gonna be ranked high enough, you know, there's not some new projects that are gonna jump in in front of us. Because if, if the bonding bill's there and you guys are ranked where you are now, the potential on the whiff is a maximum up to five million dollar grant.
Okay, so we'll know more once we find out how much the bid comes in at.
Yes, yep, the bid will tell you, and there may be a scenario where the bids come in. And for whatever reason, we think it's the risk to carry into the next funding cycle. You may choose to award it even though the, your debt service is a little higher than you would like. But you may be leaving nine million dollars or some of that on the table. And so um, we're, it's gonna be one of those things where we're gonna be watching the session closely. We're gonna be talking with the PFA and the funding officers. And I think as we go through this, when we have bid amounts, um, with our connections and knowing people to talk to, that I think we're gonna give for best way with the project. And so our recommendation is to just keep on this path. Um, and, and keep our ears to the ground here over the next couple of months, um, finding the best package for you guys. And the, the other thing, the other thing you could do is if it looks like there's not a bonding bill coming, you do have nine million dollars to work with. And so if you bid it and the, the costs are too high, we could look at what reductions could you make in the project scope to still use that nine million dollars but keep your debt service down? And, and is there pieces you could delay and go after other funding sources? So a lot of options for you, a lot of moving pieces. And um, and I think this is how we have to proceed and, and we'll work through and find the right plan for you guys as all this unfolds.
Okay, any councils got any question for him or Brian? Okay, Brian, anything else?
No, that will do tonight. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
All right, appreciate it.
Yep.
Um, okay, and then item, we'll jump down to item E, is Assistant Analyst Director, uh, Council Zins. We'll talk about that on the special meeting Thursday.
Yes, that was my plan.
Okay. We'll move on to new business. Uh, to accept the resignation letter of Rich Hayes effective April sixth, twenty twenty. I get a motion on that?
Mayor, you missed the deer hunt.
Oh, I missed, I missed the deer hunt. How would I do that? Where's that?
Right above number ten.
Oh, okay. White Lake City Deer Hunt, twenty twenty. What's the council's thought on that?
What is the DNR's take on how long you should do this for be, uh, to be deemed effective?
They told us minimum five years and we did five years.
Okay, I was just curious if there was a number that they had set.
Yeah, that was what they said.
Okay.
It's time to start the paperwork. If the council does want to approve it, I just didn't know, maybe you want to get the committee together again?
What's uh, what's the rest of the council feel about moving forward with the deer hunt?
My feelings are, I would like to see it move forward. I think maybe with one, considering one changes, maybe changing it to, to an earn a buck thing where they would, person would have to take a, a, a doll before they could take a buck. But I, I think it is helping. I think it's reducing the deer population in the city limits and you know, we've had a good registration for the number of permits that we're giving out. So it's, it's still of interest to people to, to apply for, so that's my thoughts anyway.
Dave?
I agree. Um, I think, you know, they wanted us to do a five-year minimum. Um, you know, if, basically it's a control situation now to keep the herd at, you know, at bay. I mean, the first year we had forty-some deer harvested and, you know, we're down in the teens now. Um, I think it's just to, to keep it, maintain that level um, where we're at now and we're not getting the complaints that we used to get from homeowners. I think is a, the way to go.
Brian?
Cause if there, the, the numbers aren't out there, the hunters aren't gonna be harvesting them. So I, I just think it's, it would be a way of maintaining control of what's coming into the residential area.
Brian?
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine continuing the hunt. I was just curious what the, the DNR's take on things were, but I'm perfectly fine continuing the uh antler or the bow hunt, I'm sorry.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I think it's good. I think it's very effective, so I'm all for it.
Hey, I guess I'm gonna, I'll vote it tonight. My thought was uh, we would, we would not have it, but allow just regular bow hunting in town instead of the special hunt, but that's a, that's a council decision. So if someone wants to make a motion uh, uh, to continue the deer hunt, I'll, I'll, I'll be looking for it.
Make that motion to uh pursue the deer hunt in twenty twenty.
Motion by Council Pop, support?
I'll support that.
Support by Council Segler. Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland?
No.
Council Zins?
Yes.
Pegler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, moving on to new business, uh, to accept the resignation letter of Richard Hayes effective April sixth. You, you need a motion on that, Beck?
Well, I covered that under the consented, so you can move on to ten B.
Okay, we'll go to ten B. Um, these are three budgeted items for the fire department. Um, they have a vent fan and the low bid. Beck, can I do these all three together?
Yes.
Uh, the low bid of Jefferson Fire and Safety for a vent fan is two thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-six cents. A suction strainer, Clary's safety equipment, one thousand eighty dollars. And attic ladder, Jefferson Fire and Safety of four hundred and fifteen dollars. The three items, they were all budgeted items. Any other discussion on that? If not, can I get a motion to approve those three?
Mayor, I do have a couple of comments on there. The uh, the vent fan from Jefferson, their price did not include shipping. If you add the shipping to their cost, it comes up to twenty-four eighty-four seventy-six, which would no longer make it the low, which would make would make the uh, let's see.
Clary's?
Yeah, it would make the Clary, the Clary safety equipment would make that the low bid. Uh, on the suction strainer, again, Jefferson did not include shipping on their quote. But it did bring their price up to eighteen fifty, so I think Alex Air was low on the suction strainer.
And then it's like, it looks like Clary's is again.
Uh, he, Clary's is ten eighty, okay, yep. And then on the attic ladder, again, Jefferson had a cost of four fifteen. Their shipping would have been one ninety, but that still kept them at the low bid by ten dollars, so. So I had meant today, if it made any, or Tony or Pete, to me, see if it made any difference where this came from. It looked like they were all bidding the same piece of equipment, so I think I'd change where the vent fan would be coming from to to Clary's instead of uh Jefferson Fire and Safety.
Okay, if you want to make that motion in that, that way, that would be fine.
I'll make a motion to that effect. Do I have to try to repeat it all, Becky, or did?
No, the vent fan, the vent fan now low is Clary's safety equipment at two thousand three twenty-five. The suction strainer with Clary's safety stays at a thousand eighty. And the attic ladder stays with Jefferson Fire and Safety at, wasn't four fifteen, then what would that be?
It should be six oh five.
Six oh five?
Yep.
All right, Dan has a motion on those three items. Can I get support?
I'll support that.
Support by Council Zins. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland?
Yes.
Council Zins?
Yes.
Pegler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item C, Minnesota Power easement request emailed dated April seventh, twenty twenty. Becky?
I got a, that email that's in your packet from Tom Castle at Minnesota Power. And they've been approached by Minnesota Energy Resources to grant an easement for a gas pipeline they want to replace. That's currently located for a fat road west, and they give the section and township range. Um, they just wanted to make sure with the city to see if we had any issues with it. Um, I, I'm not sure about the finding any road right away. I reached out to Matt Royce, but I didn't hear back. So I'm not sure about that, but it is Minnesota Power property.
Okay, so do we need to have a motion on that?
I don't.
Just an FYI.
Mitch, I, I forwarded to Mitch too for his comment. I don't, if he's still on.
Yeah, I'm still here, and I look at that and I, I think, uh, I mean, from a legal perspective, I don't necessarily see a problem with this. If the council wants to just go on the record with a motion to indicate that um uh, as uh requested by Minnesota Power, if you just want to weigh in that you're okay with MP granting the easement. They have to go ahead and do that. I, I think it's just probably good to have the record of that for the benefit of MP, if they need to go ahead and grant that.
Okay.
All right, I'll ask for a motion then to, to approve Minnesota Power allowing um the Minnesota Energy Resources for that easement.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Council Zins, support?
All support.
Support by Council Segler. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland?
Yes.
Council Zins?
Yes.
Pegler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Motion carries. Item D, Rob Poole will request for purchase of land for storage building. I've gotten a few calls on this. Um, I think what I'd like to do with, with the council's permission on this is I'd like to get a list of uh city property that we own and maybe have a committee formed um, to look at what we have for parcels to come back to a council. This is the second or third time this has come up with people trying to buy property that we don't have for sale. Um, I, I think the city council could come up with a list um, of, of what's out there and make a decision on what we want to sell to kind of, to, to kind of answer us. And I thought, I know Mitch, you're on there. I don't think it's, it's really legal anyway for us just to sell a piece of property if somebody requests it.
Well, well, you can, uh, you know, you, you don't necessarily have to put it out for bids. You, you can sell directly to an individual as long as you, you, you make a record of selling it for fair market value. I, I know we recently ran into an issue of not being able to go ahead with the sale because it involved somebody who was actually, you know, the zoning administrator. But, you know, going ahead and just, if you decided to do a direct sale in response to somebody's request, you could do that. But Mayor, I think you've come up with a good idea, and that is, uh, maybe, maybe it's better to come up with a plan. And a, a plan and a process of how the city will about uh selling surplus real estate.
Um, and I, I think the other thing that's important here is um, for, to have like our soup, some of our supervisors like Kenny or Jake involved. Um, so when we have a piece of property, you're making sure there's no utility easements or utility issues for the future moving forward. Is anybody interested in, in kind of heading that group uh with a couple supervisors to look at city property?
I can. Um, I know, I did talk to Rachel Account today after reading Rob's email. And I did ask her about, cause I had thought, remember hearing that we specifically had certain lots set up for this incident where people want to, um, you know, buy land for personal storage. And she did say that there were those lots on six, six, six. Um, so I don't know, and I know, I think that's what he's talking about too, that there would be issues. Um, he felt if he were to be the only one there, um, but yeah, I can um, help out with anything in looking at other um, property that we can sell to people.
Yeah, and I can help you with that too, Chris.
Okay.
Uh, Becky, maybe I'll, I'll, we'll talk with the girls. I think the, they can look up on St. Louis County Land Explorer. You can kind of find all the different parcels of properties the city owns. And so we can kind of get a list going, so we can go back to the council and have the council with supervisors in from input on which, what we should put up for sale.
Okay.
Sound, sound fair to everybody?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Sounds fair. It sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
Need a motion to the table this then?
Yeah, motion to the table.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Council Zins, support?
I'll support.
Support by Council Pop. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland?
Yes.
Council Zin?
Yes.
Pegler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Anybody else have anything else for tonight?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, there was one more thing that I actually should have brought up when we were talking about the campground. Uh, just a question for the other counselors. Did everyone? Did everyone get a chance to review the plans for the new restroom facility at the point? Because I know we were ready to put that out for bids, but there was some question from some of the counselors that hadn't seen the plans, so they, Becky did have them in the, in that secondary office for the last week or so. And I would like to go ahead and, and set that out for bids, see if everyone's reviewed them and it's okay.
Yeah, I, I looked at them. Becky, can we do that tonight with it not on the agenda, or do we have to wait till the next meeting?
No, who would be taking care of that, Bolton and Mink, then, or?
Well, Takata did the, so in that
I'm sorry.
procedure, I don't know if, if they were responsible for the bidding process or not.
We'd almost need, I don't know if they're gonna charge us to do that. We'd almost maybe need more information from Bolton and Mink, then maybe I can put it on the very next agenda.
That would be fine.
I think, I think that's a good idea. We'll find out what, who's gonna take care of it and, and get the, get the numbers put together for that.
Okay. And the other question I had was, and I guess it's probably more for Mitch, would, wondering if he would be available for that Thursday night special meeting on the fight with the fire or the ambulance service in case there's some questions that come up that we may need his advice on?
Sure, yeah, that's no problem.
Perfect.
Okay, anything else?
That's it, all I have. Thank you.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Motion by Counselor Segler, support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Peterson. Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Goodbye.